Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 21st, 2019 School Board Planning Meeting for the Dover School District. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Benko. Could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Raahouser.
Here.
Mrs. Mailey.
Here.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Breton.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Presentations. First up, we have Mr. Stefanovic from the township.
Good evening, everyone. First thing on my list was a thanks. We had a tour yesterday with the township supervisors of the current status of the school. And Dave Nelson did our tour, of course, and we really appreciate it. He did an excellent job. There was also a few people there from the borough, so it was a cooperative effort and it was very informative. We appreciate it a lot. As far as our things that I go over normally, to let you know, the building permits are still quite active. This past period, we did have 14 single-family dwellings, pooled permits, and total in all was 45. I've mentioned a couple of times in the past, there were still quite a few solar ones happening. It's quite big in our area, I guess, but it was still quite an active period. As far as the Eagle Park goes, I was just talking, coming in here, the floodplain work has all been approved and permitted and everything, so we will be starting on it soon. I heard this week, but I'm not sure, because this week is Thursday already, but there will be some blasting involved with that, and I'm sure, I take it you've been informed already, because we will be going down behind the school and the township property down there. I don't know exactly, you know, what their plans are, but I'm sure we'll keep in touch with each other to keep each other informed there. The main thing that they're working on now is replacing the sewer pipe down there to get it up to speed and then start the floodplain restoration. And our plan really is to be done with it next year. On our part, the people that go after the grants and the money for us to continue these projects have been successful again. We did receive a DCNR grant for $250,000 to do our first phase of the Eagle Park project, and that will be the outdoor classrooms, walking trails, possibly the frisbee golf, and then some related areas. Of course, you'll need parking and other things. So that will be proceeding, and I would hope be completed next year, and then we'll continue on from there. I did ask about the ball fields, as far as where they're at, and they possibly are going to be in the second step of the park project. I don't know exactly timeframes or anything yet on that. From our digging underground and doing our sewer pipes that I try to keep you up to date on, the Palomino project is one that has been a real tough one for us as far as permits and everything else that's been needed. It's the one that comes down along and finishes up next to Max Ice Cream there, down through that hollow and to under 74 to get that pipe of a size that can handle the throughput. We did get pretty good approvals there, and of course, they asked us for one more clearance permit, so we are pursuing that right now. But that is one that, once it gets started, is not a very lengthy project. What's left is probably only about eight to 10 weeks of work. So hopefully, that is going to happen in the first quarter of the year and get that done. We call it the north of the borough, but that's taking the sewer and water lines up to the church and to the animal hospital area. Is moving along quite well. We have gotten MedEd to put the pole in for our pumping station, which was a step we were worrying about, because sometimes MedEd can take eight, 10 months to get things done. Luckily, last week, we saw them up there putting power in for that. If you didn't know, that will be our first pumping station in the township. Prior to that, all of our sewer that we've been, that we're using was gravity-fed. So this will be a fairly new thing, but there's many, many townships that their whole system is driven by pumping stations, so it's not a new technology out there. It's just new for us. The other one, that's quite large, is, we call it the Joint Interceptor, and that's a, of course, a large pipe coming into the plant from the different townships that we do service out of that facility, and that does include the filtering system to stop the problems that I mentioned in the last couple of meetings with different rags and that. The good part there is, we actually did the things to start the process for the contractors last, this past month, the notice to proceed letters, and the filtering and the head, they call it the headwork, part of that is to be done within a year, and then the piping part of that will follow at, or during the same time, but it's planned for one quarter longer, for another three months until that would be finished. So that would be, that'll be a huge benefit for all of us in its own way and keep everything going in the township. The last, the last one I have, and it's a big one that we've, many of us have been working on, there is a comprehensive plan document out there now. It's dated November 2019. It's still called a draft. There are some additional steps that need be taken yet. I wanted to let everyone know, this document itself is on the website, if you would like to take a look at it in this form right here. And the next step is to have the planning commission of the township take a look at it and then give their input as to what they think could need changed on the plan or whatever. That is going to be discussed in the December 4th meeting. These are public meetings. If you have any input, please come. If anything, you can listen to what the discussion is, and the whole process here has been about getting input from the sources in our own area, so the residents included. So the meeting is on Wednesday, December 4th, if you're interested at the township, but I also understand that this will be on the agenda for the supervisors at the December meeting also. So we could approve this and send it on to the York County Planning to get its final approval and have this thing more or less documented. The interesting part, if you were any part of the original, not, I shouldn't say the original, of the prior one, which was in 2007, that was called a comprehensive plan. This is called an implementable plan. So this has action items associated with it that come from the input from all the people and all of us also that have been part of it. So if you aren't interested, we're trying to get as many people there as possible and get the input. Any questions?
Anybody? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Mrs. Benko with the financial status for 63019.
I'm going to try to make this somewhat readable for you. So this report here should not be anything different than you see every month. This was the final treasurer's report that was on for board approval in, on Tuesday. And so, let me try to make this a little bigger. So what you see here is, if we go over here, these are our projected, or our actual revenues and our actual expenses for the year. So for revenues, you'll see, we had originally budgeted 61.7 million. We came in at 65.3, and there's a number of reasons for that. And if you don't know, whenever we put this report together each month, on the bottom of the report, we try to explain the variance between the revenues last year, or the revenues budgeted and our actual revenues. So that's at the bottom of the report. I'm going to scroll down to the bottom so I can go through some of these variances with you, and we always try to do that to help you understand why we're coming in differently than what we budgeted. So we were about $4 million above our projections for 2018, 19 on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we were almost exact about 63, I think it says, 63.9 million, and the budgeted was 63.7. So that, including that, and the transfer that the board approved at the beginning of the fiscal year that was not budgeted for, we moved a million dollars over to help us with some capital projects. We moved that to the Capital Reserve Fund. Our expenditures show at 65 million. So the 65.3 million in revenue less the 65 million in expenditures then left us with a $311,000 surplus. Now, us being 100% accurate almost on the expense piece, there are some things that also go into that where you can tell we weren't, we weren't right on target. It's just some recognition of some items that we have to do per Governmental Accounting Standards Board statements that made us almost exact. So I'm going to scroll down here to some of these explanations, and these ones in blue were the explanations that explained the variances between budget and actual. So A was actually the explanation why our local revenues came in higher, probably about, actually, yeah, about a million dollars higher than actual, or than budgeted. So that was because we collected 96% real estate taxes that were assessed, and we used a 95% projection whenever we did the budget. So there was, that was a little off there. We had been using 95% and coming up pretty, pretty close in years past, so we, we will look at that for this next budgeting cycle. Also, investment earnings were up because of some good interest rates that we were able to capture. Fortunately, now, in this environment, they're starting to go back down, so we probably won't see those extra revenues coming in above budget next year. Hopefully, we'll hit our budget target that we looked, when we looked at the analysis of the interest rates. And also, if you remember during the year, I believe that, you probably saw, I believe it was an email or something come through regarding our access settlement from the IU for 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17. So that also went into that revenue piece to make them higher. Next was the state revenue side. We were higher on that by about $200,000, just from an increase in basic education funding, and our special education funding increased a little bit, but not, not as much as the basic ed. Then there was another revenue line that we were, that shows that we are up about this 1.2 million to budget, and that was not a budgeted item because GASP, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, now requires us to recognize an expenditure and a revenue whenever we enter into a lease agreement. The revenue proceeds and an expenditure to recognize the entire cost of the lease in the first year of implementation. So when we had to book that, that threw, it nets out to zero revenues and expenditures, but it really throws our budgeted items off. And whenever we put together our financial statements, there, we noted that. I've noted it in my management discussion and analysis, and I also have noted it in the note to our long-term debt, just so it's out there and we make sure we're transparent as to why we got, it's showing 1.2 million in revenue more. On the expenditure side, you'll see that salary, salaries and benefits were under budget by about $600,000. I'm just going to hit the bigger line items here. Our salaries were about $600,000. Benefits were about $500,000 under budget. I think that is, purchased professional services, that was under budget, that was actually over budget by 60,000. And then the other big line items down here are debt service payments and also, if I can find my arrow, there it is. Other financing uses were down. So the explanations for that is salary and benefits. We were unable to fill a lot of support positions this year. And also, on the benefit side, we are seeing a number of family medical plans transition down to two-party or single because of some of the parameters that we've put in place in our, in our contracts, you know, the spousal role and things like that. So we're seeing some of that savings from, from some contractual items that we've put in place. Also, on the expenditure side, our Schedule A, which is our special ed expenditures, we budgeted them based on the prior three years increase. They came, came in a little lower than what we actually budgeted for, so we are realigning that a little bit this year. I think we did a 3% increase last year. I think we're doing a 2.5 this year to fix that up a little bit. Repairs and maintenance were up this past year. Our bond interest variable rate was actually lower than we budgeted, so we didn't make such a higher payment that we budgeted for our 2008 variable rate bonds. And H was, we had, sorry, based on the current budget, we did not transfer over the money from capital projects to make our bond payment like we originally planned last year. That was about $1 million that we didn't move over. So those are some of the explanations. Same thing would be in my management discussion and analysis in the report that you received the other day. We try to make sure we discuss it in layman's terms so the typical reader can understand. So when we take a look at that 311 surplus, I want to explain to you what we did with that at the end of the year, so this, hopefully, this one comes up a little bigger. No. Okay. So these are our fund balances from last year. The first column is from last year. So we had about, in the general fund, about $19.4 million fund balance at the end of the year. Now, that includes the unspendable portion, which is sitting at LBT of $5.2 million that we paid for, or we have out there for medical claims. We had committed 5.2 for retirement, 500 technology, medical, so on. I don't have to read them to you. Debt principal, we were at 2.4 last year. The capital reserves, we were at 1 million, and that's the million that we transferred out this year, and then unassigned, we were at 4. So activity during the year of 1819, you'll see the balance at LBT grew about $450,000 due to good claims, very good claims experience, due to some of those changes, contractual changes that I had talked about. And we had actually even taken a funding holiday last year because we thought we wanted to bump that down, and it still grew. So it matters out of our, out of our concern that we can, we can handle. So we ended with LBT this year at 5.6. Keep in mind, in the 1920 budget, we budgeted two funding holidays, which we will be taking. So our hope is to bring that balance down a million dollars. And then next year, right now, we are looking at one funding holiday to continue to bring that down. Again, the factors that we can't control could, could still increase it. I don't know what else we can do. We are giving our employees a 0% increase in premium. We have done that for the past three years, so that's great that we can do that. We just want to make sure we can pull some of that out of there, because I don't think our funds being there is a good use of tax dollar money. We want to use them here in the district if we can. So retirement and technology and medical, the commitment there stayed the same for year ending 63019, but if you remember, when we did the budget for 1920, we talked about using these buckets here to assist covering the 1.5 million deficit in the 1920 budget. And then for debt principal, this is where we put some of that extra surplus funds that we had. So at the end of the fiscal year, we put $3.2 million in there, in that bucket. It's an additional 700. So we can utilize that, those funds for the debt principal, so we don't have to transfer them out of capital projects, and we can use that capital projects money for, you know, the middle school, the high school, and things like that. I think we dedicated $6 million for the high school and, or between the high school and the middle school. We made the transfer of capital reserves, like I had noted, and then I added $80,676 to our unassigned balance, which right now, with that 4.1 million, it sits at approximately 6.55% of total expenditures. And then the state requirement is to be 8% of, or less of budgeted expenditures, so that's where that sits. So in the future, what we're doing, again, we continually, year-round, watch where we are with budget. We look to see, okay, do we have to, you know, do we have to take a bond payment and pay it out of cap reserve, or, you know, can we, can we keep it in the general fund? We want to make sure we have enough money in the capital projects to continue to plan renovations and projects. I know there's talk of Stadium down the road, things like that. So we want to be mindful of what's in there and use it wisely, and if we can not use it, then that's a great thing. We can use it for other, other projects. So yeah, that's where we sat. Our Capital Reserve Fund is where that $6 million is sitting that we have dedicated to that project. So of that 13.5, six of that is monies that we were going to use. Our capital reserve, our capital projects fund, I apologize, for the high school and middle school project, that is where all the bond monies came into when we went out for bonds. So right now, the status of that is about $44.5 million, and that continues to drop very quickly because we are now really paying out the expenditures for the projects. So that is where we are at the end of 19. Hopefully, we can, you know, we're going to use this information as we move forward through our 2021 budget, working in three years here. So we're glad to get this one closed out. We were glad that the year was successful, and we will continue to monitor the budget and cut, and, you know, cut expenses where we can and just be very fiscally responsible with the funds that are there. So, any questions?
Good work, Mrs. Benko. When you have a $65 million budget to come that close in the end is very impressive, so very good budgeting skills there, so good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our first public comment period. This is for items on or off of the agenda, three-minute period. If you have anything to comment on, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record. Okay, Board President's Communication. We will be having an executive session following tonight's meeting to discuss a personnel matter. So with that, we will move right into our committee reports. First up is our Comprehensive Planning Curriculum and Professional Development Committee with Mr. Delauter, Mrs. Herman, and Mrs. Mailey.
All righty. As usual, we had a lot on our plate to discuss this evening. We started off the evening with just going over the curriculum that's up for review for vote next, in January, yeah, I guess, January next, and mainly for high school curriculum items, and that was just like pre-calculus honors, honors geometry, geometry, US government. I think that's it. We also talked about looking, they'd like to add in another college and a high school course, and this is for the US government class. What they're finding is a lot of these students are taking the US government class as the AP class, but not necessarily wanting to sit for the AP exam. So again, I think using it as an option to hopefully help our, our students who are going to post-secondary education to, to try and get some classes out of the way early on that. So, so we talked about that, so they will be coming up for vote, again, like I said, in the January meeting. We next talked, looked at the seven-year materials review cycle for our curriculum. Lot of discussion, really didn't, couldn't find anything in the past on this, that we had any kind of review cycle with this. I think we did find something, but took a look at that and just discussed how we're going to do that in all our subject areas, creating a cycle for those, those materials for the curriculum, doing a lot also for budgeting purposes, so we can get a handle on how much it's going to cost, if anything, to update our materials for our curriculum. Doesn't necessarily mean that when we review that we're going to buy additional materials, but part of that is going to be looking at, is it still appropriate, is it still up to date, those types of things, as well as like our licensing, licensing agreements and such. In that process, we're also looking at creating a process of how to review and what to look for when we're going through that review process. Dr. Monia is also, we did not have a, a list of current textbooks that were approved for use in the district, at least she, we could not find anything to that effect, so she did create a list of all the textbooks that we are currently using in the district. And again, that's to comply with our current textbook adoption policy, which is Policy Next, we looked at our special education programs, and Kathy went over a lot of that with us. We had several, again, some policies we looked at on those. First one was Policy 113, which was, yes, special education program. This was last revised in 2006, so again, something that needed a lot of updating on that. Some of the big changes included explaining the purpose of the free and appropriate public education, the least restrictive, least restrictive environment for those students, the creation of a special education plan every three years, which again, if you remember, we did, we approved that last year, I believe it was, at this time. So that's, that's, so we've already been doing that. Compliance with funding and recordings of meetings. The next one was Policy 113.1, and that's a discipline for special needs students. This one was last revised in 2003, and the big changes there are in the use of, I'm not sure what PBSP is.
Public Aid Support Funds.
There you go. Outlines of OSS and ISS regulations and regulations when referring to law. Um, and outlines of OSS and ISS regulations and regulations when referring to law enforcement, when referring to those students to law enforcement. And then OSS and ISS, out of school and in school? Okay, normal things, okay. All right, and then, um, next is, uh, one thirteen point two, behavior support. Uh, this is a, a new policy and this, um, highlights the PBIS, excuse me, the PBSPs, the use of restraints, uh, on, on students, part in their partnership with law enforcement. Uh, another new one is one thirteen point three. Uh, it was formerly the surrogate parents and, but is now, has been changed, uh, to screening and evaluation. Uh, and this breaks down our procedures that need to be followed, uh, when we're doing these screenings and evaluations. One thirteen four confidentiality, again, is another new, uh, policy and this highlights, uh, the FERPA and who can access our records and how, and also deals with the destruction of records. And then one thirteen five, which was the, the surrogate parents, um, again, so, so can, surrogate parents moved from one thirteen three to one thirteen five. And again, that's been updated and the emphasis is on unbiased parties. And then finally, policy one fourteen is the gifted education program. Uh, this policy was last updated, uh, in twenty twelve and the big change is the inclusion of the gifted education plan that, that needs to be submitted every six years, uh, and that we will, we take care of in the actual comprehensive plan that we, uh, do. And then finally, uh, we got to do more celebrating for the, for the, the high school. They delve into what, some of the things that they're, they're looking for from, from a, um, academic achievement, how to, to increase that, some of the, the programs that they're implementing. Um, one of the big things that, or some of the big things that they noted, there are some needs that they're, that they're looking to fulfill. Uh, one, they noted that, uh, again, our algebra students or math students are, um, currently in need of some further, um, enrichment, uh, act, or help i- in that area. So, they're looking at implementing a full year algebra class. So, Algebra one, right now, it's a one semester class. Uh, they would like to expand that, uh, to a full year, uh, for, for Algebra one. The second thing is, is, um, they'd like to look at getting an intervention specialist. Right now, there's no, there's currently no intervention specialist, uh, for the content areas in the, the high school area. And they feel that, uh, it's doing a disservice to our students who are struggling in certain areas, uh, that they don't have. So, that's one of the things that they are, are looking at implementing on there. Some things that, that they're doing for, um, remediation, some course changes for remediation, uh, in the past, especially with our Keystone, those students who failed to, um, complete satisfactorily the, the Keystone. Uh, they went into a room and basically sat in front of a computer, did a remediation program on the computer. Was it last year or this year you're actually implementing that? You're implementing that this year, right? With the teacher?
Last year was a computer-based issue.
This year's. So, this year, they're actually, instead of sitting in front of the computer doing that, that program, um, they're actually going back and meeting with the content teacher, uh, and getting that remediation. Um, so again, they're hoping that that, again, is going to help, uh, increase, uh, the help that they need on that. Under the school culture, again, just, uh, the, the PBIS, uh, they talked about how in the past, they kind of got away from, from the positive behavior, um, program. So, they're using it, using a lot more positive reinforcements, um, ideas. Uh, they talked about how they had a snack.
Cake, birthday cake.
A snack day in the cafeteria for those students who had no referrals. Uh, they're looking at maybe doing a, a celebrate your birthday in January or something. Uh, so they're going to have like birthday cakes, snacks, that kind of stuff, again, for those students who, uh, have no referrals. Uh, also the distracted learning, uh, the cellphone, uh, no cellphone policy. They've, they've seen a, a, a marked decrease in the use of cellphones in class. Um, and by having that decreased, uh, use, they're also seeing an increase, uh, in the failure rate, uh, or a decrease, I should say, in, in the failure rate in the first market period so far. So, we're hoping that that's going to have a, a good positive change, uh, for those, as well as earbuds. Um, earbuds can be used during downtime in class and that's kind of like, again, a reward, uh, for doing what the, they should be doing during class. Their PLCs, um, are, are becoming more structured, uh, this year. Uh, and they are using the, they have the PBIS, MTSS, safety, wellness and unity, uh, PLCs. And as I said, it's, it's structured this year and, and once a month, they do a share out from each program where they come together as a, uh, as an entire building and they share out what each PLC has talked about, uh, for, for that past month. And then finally, uh, in, uh, professional development, talk about having, uh, getting the teachers more comfortable with accessing the data and how to use that data, uh, to help, uh, guide the instruction, uh, for their students. Uh, again, still a work in progress, a lot of baby steps being taken on that as some of the teachers, um, weren't very comfortable with using that da- that data. Uh, and then, um, the P VAS meetings, they're, they're utilizing those again to look at student, um, uh, achievement. And then the CDT, and I apologize.
Classroom diagnostic testing.
Thank you. Classroom diagnostic testing, and again, just standard analysis on that. Um, and then the Ed Insight, which is again, data warehouse, uh, for parental contact and is, does all the data that is in one place and they're starting to utilize that some more. I think that's everything. Now, I like this one better because somebody looked after me and they, they pre-pinned it. I won't say who that was, but, um, but, uh, but that was, like I said, we, we talked about a lot. Um, again, I just want to say again, how, how thrilled I am with everything that's going on for curriculum-wide in, in the, in the, the district. As we saw on Tuesday, we're making tremendous strides, uh, in improving our achievement. And, uh, again, just a shout out to everybody, staff, teachers, everybody, uh, in their district for working hard, um, to make this happen, so, very proud of that.
Any questions? Okay, next we'll move on to our combined capital project steering committee and the facilities and safe and supportive schools. I believe Mr. DeSho is going to report out on that tonight.
Uh, yes, we have a couple of things. Um, we were talking about the possible Dover High School, uh, stadium upgrades. We did talk about it briefly last month. Um, currently, we have three thousand ninety-six seats, twenty-two hundred on the home side, eighty-five hundred on the visitor's side. If we would do the upgrades to, to bring it to code, we would lose about two hundred and four seats. Let's see, what else? We have, uh, questions out for the bathroom still. We don't have an answer about having to add twenty-eight women toilets or anything like that. Let's see. The next step for this would be, all of this was done free of charge. The next step unfortunately would cost money and that would be for the drawings of the plans. So, I do believe we'll need some type of, uh, action from us to, uh, see if we want to proceed. But, uh, Mr. Nelson did say that, uh, this would not be something we'd want to do this summer. It would be two summers from now. He did say that we could update the press box as long as we leave it the same size. Uh, we would not have to worry about bringing anything else to code, so we have that. As our other item is the current high school, soon to be middle school. Uh, we have a bid list of some people. Uh, the bids do close on December seventeenth at two PM. For general construction, we have three people so far. We have East Coast Contracting, Low Bar and ECI. Uh, HVAC construction, we have, uh, two. Plumbing construction, we have two, but unfortunately with electrical, we have no bids currently. Uh, Dave did say that it's not a lot of work, but, uh, they're going to make some phone calls and try to get some bids. Uh, apparently the word is out that, uh, it is very busy and people are full. So, that is where we are for bids. Um, they are doing a bid walkthrough on Tuesday, November twenty-sixth at three PM where all of these, uh, contractors will be coming out to take a tour of it. Uh, I believe that's all we had for the capital project facilities. Uh, Mr. Nelson did say that they did purchase a van and I think you said what, sixteen weeks? Until it gets delivered. And I believe that is all I have. Oh, and with the bids, we have two more runnings in the paper and I guess we're also on some, uh, websites right now. So, they're trying to get some more bids there. Anything to add, Mr. Emmy?
Yeah, the only thing is that the North Salem boiler has been fixed and the cost came under ten, ten, ten thousand dollars.
Everything, go ahead. Any other questions from board members?
Just a, a question on the stadium. Uh, you mentioned that the, the next would be to get drawings, which would be an expense. Is there a way to kind of foresee what kind of costs we're looking at before we went down that, made that step? Or would you have to have the drawings before you could even?
I spoke to Mr. Nelson at the end of the meeting and he's going to give us some estimates on what the drawings themselves would cost. And then that would probably lead us down the path as to what the estimated cost of the project would be afterwards then.
Okay.
So. And Mr. Nelson, I think you have some photos you wanted to share tonight?
Okay, so this is, uh, the nadatorium and, um, no, they didn't have a party. This isn't party streamers. Um, that's just paper that's on that metal when they put it down. So, it's a, it's a punched metal. You can actually see through it right now. This is, uh, in the corner of the nadatorium, this is our air exchange unit, which brings fresh air in and stale and bad air out. Um, this is a shot from, from the, actually the help desk area towards the gymnasium and cafeteria. Um, this is, uh, when they're building the stairs. One of the stair towers, they're all done. So, some of the things that I catch when I'm there, and it's kind of hard to see, but there's a sprinkler head right here. And it is right in the middle of that roof hatch, so you can't get out the roof hatch. So, guy put the sprinkler head in before they cut the hole, so now they've already moved it, but it's just some of the little things I catch. We had a little mud one day and this guy got stuck pretty bad. We had to take a dozer to pull him out, but he, he was really in there that day. This is, uh, some undergrounds that we had. This is in the area of the concession stand for the, uh, multipurpose field. This is my happy place here. I like, I like going in here, it's kind of neat. Um, this is the mechanical room with all the, the, um, um, hot and cold water pipes up above, which see the big ones and the boilers and the hot water tanks and heaters and stuff. This is some of the pumps that are in there. There's three of them here. These are both all small, they're about twenty-five horsepower. Um, there are some in there that are upwards of seventy-five. Um, this was, um, pretty cold day, that's why it's, it's kind of foggy. Uh, we're, they're getting ready to pour, uh, adjacent to the gym. This area over here is the gymnasium and then this wall here, which is now built, um, is, uh, actually supports the running track and they're pouring underneath it. So, we pump everything, that's what this big green thing is here, so we, cement truck comes in, go ahead. And we pump it, so there you can see their cement truck feeds right off in, it pumps up here and they can take that hose and go almost anywhere with it. This is the area of, uh, where the locker rooms and, um, storage rooms, coaches' offices, that's that kind of thing for the gymnasium. This is before they, they actually, actually, uh, cemented it. This is how we're heating the building, so we're, we have, we have two of these running right now and they just brought another one in today, but they didn't get it hooked up today. So, uh, it's unreal how, even though it's really cold outside, you only have two in that whole building, it's not bad in there, so. Where we have these cutouts in the wall, we have a, uh, they're, they're fire breaks and we have to, we actually have the building divided up into five different sections, fire sections, and if we have a, a fire alarm goes off or a fire or something, these doors will close and they actually slide from one side to the other. And this is just the bulkhead up above, so once the duct works through here, they'll seal it, um, so it'll be actually fireproof. Um, so this is the gymnasium wall, um, the, one of the, uh, actually it's a corridor wall, but it's one of the gymnasium wall and it's an outside wall, so it's, it's, uh, after this, go ahead. It gets bricked up, that's what they're doing here. So, anything at, below where that scaffold is, that'll, that's in the building and that'll get painted, but everything where you see it's blue, gets brick put on it. Like that. So, that's the same wall we just looked at and they're actually down here working down at the end. That's what they're, they were here today, so they're almost done today, but they're down at the very end putting that up. And that is the auxiliary gym right here, this area here. That's auxiliary gym. This is the back corridor between the gym and the auxiliary gym. Uh, this is up in CTE, uh, in the, um, graphic arts room. Um, this is some of the stud walls they're building here. And then there's a divider wall between what I like to call the wet and the dirty area and the computer area. So, on the side we're on here when I'm taking these pictures where they do the screen printing, they print T-shirts, business cards and flyers and do all the messy stuff. And on the other sides where they do the design work on computers and such. It's just another shot of that same area with the, one of the storage rooms and, uh, quarters. So, I want to show you this, uh, this is in the hallways and believe it or not, these hallways are getting filled. So, these ductworks, this is what you see up here, is right here is one of them, um, are fresh air intakes and returns. So, they bring fresh air in and take stale air out of the classrooms, um, so we can turn the air over. That, the corridors are getting full, so there you can see, there's the ductwork, there's our pipe work, over here is a, a cable tray, uh, so we're, we're getting, we're filling up fast up there. Uh, this was, I think, uh, last week one day, it was real foggy and we got, actually got sixteen of these rooftop air handlers in. Uh, there's two more, um, and we have them all set, so. Um, it's just, uh, a, a shot of, and then it's a little hard to see, but, um, there's a cement block wall from this beam up and then this cement block wall is actually on the inside of it. And this area is the locker rooms and, um, coaches' offices and such for the gymnasium, which is right in this area. This is another shot of that same thing. This is a front corridor here, um, that goes between the gym and there's some classrooms on that front wall. Um, this is the same cor- same type of corridor, it's in the back there between the cafeteria and the gym. And what you see is steel up here, this is the running track. Um, so that's why we built these walls out here and then you have corridor here, that's, that's how you get your running track. So, this is from the auxiliary gym end, uh, they're bricking both sides of it in this picture. Um, this is one of the CTE rooms, uh, I think this is CAD or CNC, some, I'm, I'm struggling here, CAD or CNC. Um, but it, it gets, actually gets a drywall ceiling and if you notice up here, we've got lots of insulation, um, and then two layers of drywall, an inch and a half drywall, which gives us a two-hour fire rating, uh, but the insulation is there to keep noise from going upstairs. This is when it's finished, uh, took us, right after they got done. Uh, around the stair towers, they build these, uh, knee walls, a reverse knee wall that comes down, um, so it kind of covers up all the nasty stuff with the, around the stair tower, finishes it off. This is, that was one, this is just another one here, the guy's building it here. Uh, this is in art room and this is, uh, the, this is in the larger of the two art rooms and there's a mezzanine up here. Then we have the stairs in. And then this is in the art room, looking out the court, to the courtyard. Um, right now, you can see the gym wall, but eventually there'll be a curtain wall over there with all glass where the, you know, cafeteria kids will sit and eat lunch and what have you. And then this is, we're in the, uh, auditorium and this was when we first dug out the orchestra pit. It's a little wet down there, but the, you know, the first day we did it, we had to relieve all that pressure down there. These pipes, uh, go around, they have holes in them and they go, actually go out. These pipes uh, go around, they have holes in them and they go, actually go out the back of the building and dump out into the creek. After they put these in, they put this uh, poly on and then they, they put stone on top of everything and then the concrete on top of that. So any water that gets underneath that concrete will go out these pipes and go out, so. Uh, this is just another shot of the same thing. This is the ramp coming up and the stairs going that, coming up. So we have to have ramp and stairs to get up onto the stage. Um, so this is to get on the stage here. We started that today. Uh, we pretty much have the auditorium ready for concrete, so this is, uh, they're putting a stone in this morning. And that's what they're doing here. We had a, a full-size, if you back up there at one picture, you'll notice there's, it went the wrong way. There's, there's a, that's a bobcat, but there was a full-size triaxle truck backing in the drop door. So it's, it's bigger than what it looks like when you get in there. Um, this is bobcat. So um, somebody asked me this question, uh, I think yesterday or I don't know when, this morning. Uh, this is what our, our water fountain situation looks like. Uh, we have a, a water fountain here, a water fountain here, and this is a bottle filler. So you can take those big stainless steel Yeti cups or whatever and you can put that underneath there and it fills the cup up with cold water. So we have them everywhere. This is in the shop, one of the shop areas. I think this is woodshop if I'm right. Um, and uh, took this picture to show you. We got the door, we had the roll-up doors installed. And these cabinets over here are actually for the dust collecting, dust collection system. And that's what you see here. These lower pipes here where the little goose necks are, they get little flexible hoses on. That's all your, it's all your dust collection. This is your conditioning and heat and fresh air vents. Um, today they poured the concrete pad for the uh, greenhouse and that's what you're seeing here. This is concrete pad. They were still there at five o'clock tonight when I left. So, um, it's another shot of it. Alright, so I thought I'd show you some pictures of the North Salem Boiler. I only have three. So, um, but uh, this is the area where we had to leak. Uh, and honestly, you can't see it until you put pressure in it. It's like a pinhole. It's like a real fine stream came out of it. Um, and when I talked about the sections, these are the sections here that we had to take apart. So we had to push this boiler apart. The one that was leaking was right here. Of course it had to be in the middle. It couldn't be at the front or the back, but it was right in the middle. We pushed it apart. Um, and put it back together and it leaked and we pushed it apart again and we put it back together. And it had a real tiny, tiny, tiny little drip and we decided to fire it and see if it would seal and it did. So we're good to go. Um, so, and that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any questions from anybody? Okay, human and fiscal resources, Mrs. Brenton and Mr. Cook.
Uh, we had a few items on our agenda tonight. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, we talked about our budget. Um, as Mrs. Benko had mentioned earlier in her presentation, uh, we're just finishing up the uh, eighteen nineteen budget. We're currently in the nineteen twenty, but already planning ahead. It, it's kinda like that at any one given time. It's like three different years worth of budgets being worked on. And just to give you a little bit of an update there, everything is on track. Progress is being made. We're, we're, we're ahead of last year's schedule by design. That's what our intent was. Uh, so uh, there's meetings happening now. Many of them have already happened. Uh, this process will continue to happen. And uh, our goal will be to, to be able to finalize a budget a month earlier in this upcoming year than what we were in the past. So that's kinda the update there. Uh, just a little bit of an F Y I. Some of the things that we invested in, in the, in the past are paying dividends in this process. Things like Skyward and the ability to get information in and, and work with it. So it's always good to know that there's, you know, investments that we've made are, are paying off. Um, we talked about our access secretary position. Um, you might recall on Tuesday night, we approved Jenny Foltz to move into that position uh, as the access secretary following Deb Milford's retirement. Um, in doing that, that uh, evaluation and, and posting, uh, it was discovered that some of the things that are currently happening there, our job description didn't quite match up. So coming in January, we'll be approving that, an updated job description that is, is more uh, more detailed to what's actually happening there. Um, there are some, some duties that are being taken care of. It just weren't special, uh, specifically mentioned there. So that, that job uh, description will be coming in January. Uh, just trying to make sure that everything's reflected, uh, that's currently happening. Um, we had a staffing update from Christina. Um, you may have noticed there was some, some job postings that uh, went up today. Uh, some of those things we had um, uh, approved on Tuesday night. Or as a result of the things that we approved on Tuesday night, some positions were, were open. Um, we continue to, to struggle to fill P C As and food service. Uh, those are two areas that uh, seem to be a, an ongoing uh, ch- uh, struggle to fill. Uh, several other positions uh, that are, are currently being posted. Um, attendance secretary at the intermediate school. Uh, long-term sub for uh, intermediate school, uh, music, choral. And um, lot, another long-term sub for Dover Elementary, uh, teaching position. And uh, couple of other, couple of other positions as well. Middle school principal, you saw that that was uh, posted as well. So um, that's kind of an ongoing thing, month to month. That's sort of what, you know, that's what Christina does. So, um, and then also we uh, we talked at length about our current cafeteria fund. Uh, if you looked at uh, the treasurer's report that was uh, posted for Tuesday night, you may have noticed that the cafeteria fund has an increasing balance uh, from where it was a few years ago, even a month ago. Um, there's a few reasons uh, why uh, the fund has been increasing in uh, in, in amount. There's, there's a number of real, reasons really. For one, uh, we're getting greater participation. More kids are buying lunch to begin with. There's more free and reduced lunch that we're being compensated for, which is also helping that, that fund. Um, there's also, um, unfortunately, uh, some of the positions, employee positions have been tough to fill. So there's less employee expense coming out of that fund. And uh, one other, and I'm sure there's more, but uh, Helen's doing a great job of, you know, looking for economical ways to purchase food and, and some of those things that are taking place. So when you put that all together, you know, our, our fund has been increasing. And it's, it's important to note that, you know, at any one given time, you may look at it, right now it's a little over eight hundred thousand. That may be a timing thing. It may not truly be there. There just may be some bills to pay that are coming out of that. So some of that is a timing, but the general trend has been that it's been increasing. And um, you know, the concern was raised the other evening about, you know, what is a comfortable level? And we had talked about that tonight. Uh, the number of around five hundred thousand is probably a realistic number of where it would be good to, to have that fund be. Um, the fact that it's a little higher than that now might put us in a better position to possibly replace some equipment uh, down the road. Um, some things that do need replaced, so there may be some utilization of that. Tying into that is some of the other things that we talked about um, the other evening was um, the debt that, stu- the, the student debt paying for lunches, um, I think the number of thirty, thirty-five thousand was, was thrown out there. That is a definite concern. It is a concern that, that we can't, you know, or that that uh, figure is raised, is raising, it was going up. Um, unfortunately, we're not allowed uh, from state mandates to use some of the, the fund that's currently there, that eight hundred thousand, to pay those, those debts off. We're not allowed to do that, so our hands are kind of tied. But um, coming up in January, Mrs. Krim and Mrs. Benko are gonna do a presentation to help us understand what the process looks like as far as the debt collection and um, you know, what we're looking at there. There's definitely guidelines that they follow and it's, it's not haphazard. So um, we're, we're, you know, while there's an increasing fund balance there in the cafeteria fund, it's, it's very, very positive and it really isn't tied to trying to collect money from past due accounts or anything like that. So it's kinda two different things happening there. So hopefully that helps to, you know, give you a little bit of background and understanding about where that fund should be and what, what's going on with it. Is there anything I missed, Mrs. Britton?
Not really missed. One thing that I think I wanted to highlight that, that we talked about was that we both learned that within the food services, we, one of the, another reason for the increased amount too is that previously, um, any kind of, of catering was done outside of, of the district. And I think now we're relying more on our own services, so that money is staying in the district as well. And, and not kind of, you know, going like to the pizza box or, you know, um, anywhere else, which I thought was kinda neat to, you know? It's, brings a whole new meaning to uh, support local, local businesses, so to say, um, or support, support local. So I just thought that was neat that we were able to keep that, that money and reinvest it in the district, so.
Any questions?
That's it.
Yeah, I, just, you, with, with looking at some of our, our, our staffing issues, especially these, these support positions, are there any ideas out there why we're having such difficulty in filling these positions? Is it just, you know, because the economy i- is, is doing well? Is it, is it pay? Is it benefits? Do we have any idea on that?
All of those.
All the above.
All of the above.
And, and it's not just our struggle. Um, as business managers, we talk monthly about this problem. Um, and unfortunately, it's not all part-time positions. It's full-time positions also. So I know some other districts are having troubles filling secretaries or um, you know, full-time custodians, part-time custodians. Like, i- it's across the board. Um, with the unemployment rate being so low and the economy being um, good at this point, we just can't find them. They don't.
And we're reaching out in the, in the mu- in the newsletter. We put a full-page ad in there. Um, we are reaching out to parents because we think these are perfect jobs for parents, substitute teachers, same thing. And we're just really struggling.
I would, I would also add to that. I think some of the positions turn out to be something a little bit different than what the, the candidates who, who do fill them think it's going to be. They're, they're pretty tough. Some of those are pretty tough positions. And it, it requires maybe a little more commitment than what they were really prepared to do.
Yes, yeah.
Makes it tough to, to fill them with long-term results.
With, with the inability to fill these positions, um, how is that impacting our ability to, to do an efficient job in, 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 you know, in that area?
It is impacting um, specifically on the um, P C As.
Special.
Um, it, it's really hard to get peo- we have, you know, contracted with um, outside companies to, to bring in people, subs, and they can't supply them to us 'cause they don't have them either, or they can only work certain hours or, you know, there's a variety of reasons. So, I mean, our, our hands are kinda tied and, but we're doing the best we can. We're having some of our part-time people um, fill in in the um, in the afternoon. If, you know, they work mornings, sometimes they fill in the afternoon. Um, we do a lot of that. Uh, we have to be careful on um, the Affordable Care Act hours for that. So, yeah, I mean, it, it affects our classrooms. Um, it affects, you know, even substitutes, teaching substitutes. We're trying everything we can. Um, job fairs, um, we're gonna look at some more job fairs for support staff this year. Anything we can do to get the word out.
Do you think that there needs to be discussion on adjusting the salary ranges for these positions? I, I think, you know, with looking at that.
We are, we are gonna talk about um, po- possibly, we, we haven't had the internal discussions just yet, but possibly increasing at least our subrates. Um, our support contract is, was just ratified. Um, so um, there's a while for that. I did um, tried to do a comparison of us versus others in the county, um, other like districts as far as our salaries go. We're, we're pretty, pretty competitive with everybody. So, I mean, and increasing those costs a lot of money.
And, and I realize that, and I just wanted to base the, fast the discussion that we, we need to start, start looking at.
Yeah, I mean, we, we talked as business managers the other day. Um, and they were, there, there were some business managers that said, you know, we're, you know, we're increasing twenty-five cents plus three percent plus this. But then we looked at their rates and they're right where we are.
They're not getting.
They're ending where we are now. So that, that's positive news that, you know, we've taken the steps over the past couple of years to increase those rates. Um, I mean, our support staff was getting probably about four point six percent last contract. So I think we've done the job. Um, and I don't know that it's always a dollar per hour. It's more of maybe how many hours or what other jobs they do. Or like you said, you know, they're not knowing what the job is coming in. P C As are tough. I mean, you, it, it takes a special person to be able to work with our children. And some people are coming in not knowing what it entails and then they're leaving.
Thank you.
And I would say too that, you know, this is something that's affecting industry in general. It's not just a, a school-wide problem. It's, you know, most, most companies are hiring right now just because there's just nobody out there that, I mean, most, most people have jobs. So it's one of the unfortunate downsides of a good economy is the people, I mean, it affects the temp agencies as well. It's just sort of the trickle-down effect and, you know, and it takes the right kind of person to fill the roles that we need. And it makes it doubly tough to.
Administrators too are doing a good job of, of trying to think, how can they help? Um, for example, Bobby was a key factor in getting O V R. Oh, yeah, O V R, occupation, uh, Office of Occupational Rehabilitation, um, to, you know, partner with us. So we can start to train those students in jobs that we have. Um, custodial, um, food service maybe. Um, so we're trying some of that. We're hoping to work maybe, you know, with C T E a little bit. Um, their business department, we've had interns in our offices, um, helping us out a little bit. So whatever we can do internally also to help fill those positions, we are doing.
Anybody else? Okay, we do have two items that we need to vote on in this category tonight, so we will move into those actions. Um, the first, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the appointment of David App as acting athletic director uh, at his current salary plus a five hundred dollar per pay stipend.
So move.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko?
Mr. Ahouser, um, did you enter your vote?
What?
Did you enter your vote?
Well, nothing showed up. I can't mark something that isn't there.
Would you like to give me a voice vote?
I can give you a voice vote. Yes.
Thank you.
No, no, did things show up on my computer?
Okay, so the motion carries. Uh, next, we have received an offer on Crawletown Elementary after years of uh, working at the sale of this property. Uh, so tonight we'd like to start the official process, uh, which is an actual, pretty lengthy and involved process of selling uh, public facilities such as that. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the enclosed resolution authorizing the sale of Crawletown Elementary.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions or discussion?
I just wanna make sure that it gets clarified that this isn't, this is not like the final sales agreement. There was an offer, but we're just starting the, the very beginnings of the process.
All those legal processes that are involved, yep. Okay, Mrs. Benko? And the motion carries. Okay, this is our last period of comments and observations from our board members tonight, does anybody have anything?
Come out and see the play this weekend.
What are the times again for that?
Friday and Saturday at 7:00 PM.
Seven.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Just a question, I've been seeing more and more news reports about the potential negative effects of vaping, and I was wondering if that is something that we as a district are relaying to our students, that seems to be something that is drawing a lot of attention.
And it is rising in our district as well, we are definitely seeing it more, I know we've talked to Kirsten, and we've been talking about how we do address this, so yes, we're talking about it.
Anybody else? Okay, this is our last public comment period then for any items on or off of the agenda, does anybody have anything? Okay, future meetings, our next meeting will be Thursday, December 5th, 2019, that will be our board reorganization meeting at 7 o'clock PM here. So, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Is it moved?
Is there a second? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
We adjourn, thank you. Board members, we'll meet just.